We have the question of the colors by here. Please.
Just attention. For their attention, step through. For their for march. Oh. Very close to us. I'm on page 110 of the presentations.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. For their on face, for their march. Oh. That's it.
Thank you. Roll call.
Gilson.
Here.
Worderk.
Here.
Walensky.
Here.
Clocher.
Here.
Mons.
Here.
Sukla.
Here.
Spears.
Here.
Teeling.
Here.
We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is introduction of guests. What we do is have the staff members introduce themselves and then we ask everybody in the audience, if you would be kind enough, state your name. We just go through the audience. And also there's a sign up sheet being circulated. If you would sign in, please, that helps the city clerk keep track of who is here in attendance tonight. And later on, when we have citizens' comments, if you wish to come forward, there's another sign up sheet up there so we can keep track of who is addressing the city council tonight. So we will begin with the city administrator.
Bart Olson, city administrator and interim director of Parks and Recreation.
Richard, would you please?
Eric Doos, director of public work.
Christine, community director.
So I'm the city engineer.
Rob Fredrickson, finance director.
I'm for speech communication.
Okay, young man, could you tell us your name?
Kyle.
I'm Gary, location council of Yorkville.
I'm Walker, New Yorkville.
Robert Loftus.
Bob Hayes, Yorkville.
Harold Colston, Yorkville.
Ron Strachan, City.
I'm on with Steven, Yorkville.
Chris McAdams, Yorkville.
Rashid Williams, Yorkville.
Craig Yezek, Yorkville.
I'm with the people.
I'm with the people.
Ted Robinson, Yorkville.
I'm Parker, Yorkville.
I'm on with the people.
Nate Royal, Yorkville.
Doug Ferber, Yorkville.
Front here.
I'm special focus.
I'm on with the people.
I'll fix this.
Brian Lynch, Yorkville.
Yes.
You have the chat, Yorkville.
I'm Parker, Yorkville.
I'm Parker, Yorkville.
I'm on with Parker.
Rick Anderson, County Director.
Ken Dollar, Yorkville.
Mike Robinson, Yorkville.
Kim Robinson, Yorkville.
Brian Melma, Yorkville.
I'm on with the people.
Amy Cameron, Yorkville.
Beth Corden, Yorkville.
Hey, Parker, Yorkville.
I'm on with the people.
Kyle Corden, Yorkville.
Hey, Rodney, the community chairman, please.
Ryan Moore, WSC.
Thank you for all being here tonight. We have next amendments to the agenda. I have write off one amendment I'd like to make to the agenda tonight.
Mayor's report number 12.
Yes. Okay, I would like to table item number 12 under mayor's report, an ordinance amending city code providing for an admission fee at inter-track wagering locations. I'd like to enter cam motion. So moved.
Sorry.
Okay, and table it to the next city council meeting on December 14.
Gilson.
Hi.
Clocher.
Aye.
Mons.
Aye.
Spears.
Aye.
Clocher.
Aye.
Worderk.
Aye.
Walensky.
Aye.
Teeling.
Aye.
Okay, are there any other amendments to tonight's agenda? Alderman Gilson.
I'd like to pull PW 2010-80 for further discussion.
Are there any other amendments? That's number seven under the consent agenda, Perry Meadows. Are there any other? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Okay, also, we would like to move up the executive session. Where do you want it?
The executive session would hopefully after citizens' comments.
Okay. Following citizens' comments. So could we entertain a motion to that? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the executive session will be after citizens' comments tonight. Okay, committee meeting dates, Public Works Committee meeting.
6:30 PM, December 21, 2010, City Hall Conference Room.
Economic Development Committee.
6:30 PM, December 7, City Hall Conference Room.
Administration Committee meeting.
6:00 PM, December 16, City Hall Conference Room.
And Public Safety Committee meeting.
6:00 PM, December 20, City Hall Conference Room.
And all of these meetings are open to the public and I'd like to encourage all of you to attend. We'd like to hear your feedback on the items they're discussing. And agendas are online, you can find it on the city's website. The next is, next item is presentations and this is always a fun part of being a mayor. I get to give recognition to some people who have done some good things for the city. And the first one, I would like to ask Eagle Scout William D. Parker to please come forward. Certificate of recognition, the mayor and city council of the United City of Yorkville has issued this certificate to William D. Parker, acting of his achievement in the way of legal scout through the Voice House of America Youth Program of Character Development while he stays through the training to become his 23rd day in the embrace of justice. Congratulations. Mr. Parker here, this project is out of the education center, did a lot of work in fixing up and improving more sites, is it? So could you tell us a little bit about it?
There was some educational classroom sites out in the woods and.
We really appreciate your coming up before the meeting. There's so many people that we don't know that we don't have a lot of money right now and vouchers and public sites. We need to make our community sponsors, so we really appreciate what you've done. Thank you very much. And I'm glad you went to Holiday Under the Stars again, but we had a contest this year, see who would be able to win the Christmas tree. And unfortunately, I think the young lady who won was not able to attend, but she did a really great job with her essay and also the two young men who came in second and third place who showed up and helped me light the Christmas tree. We thought that their essays were so great too that we wanted to recognize all of them. So I'd like to ask Lexi Weiss to come up. Okay, could you read your award-winning, if you don't mean, I don't mean to embarrass you, but I.
No problem.
Thank you. I think it's great.
I titled my essay, "No More Presents," and my annual charcoal Christmas memory was when my family stopped with the presents. Instead, we went on a family trip to Wisconsin Dells. We had to spend a lot of quality time together and it was so much fun to run around the water park. I will always remember that trip. It just really doesn't matter where we go, but it's the fact that we were together is what counts. Isn't that what Christmas is all about?
This certificate of recognition, the mayor and city council of the United City of Yorkville present to Lexi Weiss for submitting the first place winning entry for the Holiday Under the Stars essay contest. We commend you for your dedication and for sharing your Christmas memory with the Yorkville community. Congratulations. Congratulations. And now the second place winner, Kyle. Kyle. Okay, Kyle, tell me, let's hear what your Christmas essay was about.
My Christmas essay was about when I woke up, all my presents were on my bed and all my stuff like that I liked, and my room was clean.
And you got a charcoal blanket and presents on your bed, right? So thank you for sharing that with us and we're the mayor and city council presented certificate. Now how do you pronounce your last name?
Yazek.
Yazek. Kyle Yazek for submitting the second place winning entry for the Holiday Under the Stars essay contest and we also commend you for your dedication and for sharing your Christmas memory with the Yorkville community. So here's your certificate and here's a little something for you.
Thank you.
Okay? Now this is kind of fun because his brother Ryan was the third place winner. Well, Ryan and Kyle were at the tree lighting ceremony, right? So why don't you share with us what your story was about, okay?
One Christmas, a blizzard came while we were driving to grandma's house in Texas. The interstate was closed down and I was scared, but our dad got us safely to a hotel. Having my family safely together on Christmas Eve was my honest Christmas memory.
That's great. Thank you. And you also get a certificate of recognition for being the third place winner in the Holiday Under the Stars essay contest and the city council and I commend you for your dedication and for sharing your Christmas memory with the Yorkville community. So thank you very much. I think they did a fantastic job with the tree lighting because as soon as they pushed the button, everybody said, woo! Very good.
The trailer.
Yeah. It was great, wasn't it? Yeah. Well, thank you very much. Okay, we have no public hearings tonight, so anyone here would like to address the city council? Please come up to the podium and sign in. Is there anyone who would have a comment they would like to make to the city council tonight? No? Okay. What we're going to do next is we have to go into executive session. We try usually not to do this. We try to schedule it at the end of the city council meeting because we don't want you to be sitting out here waiting for us, but sometimes some things connect to things that are on our agenda. So tonight we're going to go into executive session at this unusual place in our agenda. So I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for two reasons, for litigation and for the appointment employment compensation to fund performance of specific employees of the public body. So moved. Do you have a second?
Second.
Spears.
Aye.
Clocher.
Aye.
Worderk.
Aye.
Walensky.
Aye.
Teeling.
Aye.
Gilson.
Aye.
Sukla.
Aye.
Mons.
Aye.
Moving forward, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Worderk.
Aye.
Clocher.
Aye.
Spears.
Aye.
Mons.
Aye.
Sukla.
Aye.
Gilson.
Aye.
Teeling.
Aye.
Walensky.
Aye.
Motion carried. Amendments, plea, plan commission, zoning board of appeals, report.
I'm just an advocate. I'm a senior citizen. I'd like to make a comment from the chair and consider three matters to deal with the proposed office athletic facility and third, the rezonance. I'd like to add that we're building a staff for two people to help me sort of.
Minutes for approval. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the city council for September 28, 2010, as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
Alderman, one seconded. Do we have any corrections or comments on these minutes? Roll call, please. Oh, no, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, bill payments.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bill list in the amount of $629,467.33 vendors and $238,564.54, payroll period ending 11/6/2010, for a total of $868,031.87.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Alderman, one seconded. Do we have any comments on the bill list? Alderman Spears.
I do have a question on page 29, YEDC. It says administrative annual meeting and it's charged to training and conferences. And Bart, do you have a copy of the budget? Because according to the information I have, we have no funds in that account.
Might be need to be coded to travel meals and lodging then. One of those two line items has some money in it, so.
Okay, and that is. I'm trying to see what the balance is there right now. So that was when both you and the mayor attended the dinner, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Actually, just for correction, Alderman, Clocher attended on my behalf as the mayor pro temp.
Yes, that's true.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Clocher.
Aye.
Spears.
Nate.
Mons.
Aye.
Sukla.
Aye.
Gilson.
Aye.
Teeling.
Aye.
Walensky.
Aye.
Worderk.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, there's a rather lengthy mayor's report tonight, I apologize. A lot of things on here. The first item under the mayor's report is appointments to the cultural commission. We recently established a cultural commission. Its purpose is to establish things like museums and try to encourage art galleries, those kinds of things to come into the city and oversee the preservation of the old jail and renovation, which all of that is supposed to be done without any expense to taxpayers. So the first person I would like to appoint to this commission is resident Gary Shermer. And he is a local artist who I think would be very important to help us understand how to encourage people to open up galleries or to do exhibits in Yorkville. So he's a resident of, I believe, of War II. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Shermer to the commission. So moved. Second. Any comments or questions on this appointment? Roll call, please.
Sukla.
Aye.
Mons.
Aye.
Spears.
Aye.
Clocher.
Aye.
Worderk.
Aye.
Walensky.
Aye.
Teeling.
Aye.
Gilson.
Aye.
The next appointment I'd like to make is of Mr. Howard Manthai. He's former president of the Kendall County Historical Society and he is a docent and a member of the Board of the Old Barn Museum. And he is also, I think he's a resident of Ward 1, so he's also Yorkville resident. And he has a very strong commitment to serving Yorkville. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Mr. Manthai to the Cultural Arts Commission.
So moved.
Second. Any comments or questions on this appointment? Roll call, please.
Spears.
Aye.
Clocher.
Aye.
Worderk.
Aye.
Walensky.
Aye.
Teeling.
Aye.
Gilson.
Aye.
Sukla.
Aye.
Mons.
Okay, the next appointment is of Stephanie Todd and she's the chairman of the Kendall County Historical Preservation Commission. She has a lot of contacts that I think will help us get grants to do, to help us with the old jail. And I think she's also on liaison, the Citizens Advisory Committee and the Chicago, of the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Stephanie Todd as a member of the Cultural Arts Commission. Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any comments on Stephanie? Yes.
She lives in Oswego, correct?
She does.
Okay.
She would be one of the non-residents. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Clocher.
Aye.
Worderk.
Aye.
Walensky.
Aye.
Teeling.
Aye.
Gilson.
Aye.
Sukla.
Aye.
Mons.
Aye.
Spears.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, there are four more positions for this commission. Anybody who is interested in serving on it, please contact the city secretary during regular office hours or you can download, what do you call it, application forms off of the city website. The next item is appointment to the city's Human Resources Commission. We have a vacancy on that commission and I would like to fill it by appointing Anna M. Schwem. Could I entertain a motion to approve the appointment?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and I think she pretty much explains her interests and she has already volunteered to help implement the community garden for us. So I think that's an initiative that the Human Resource Commission is undertaking right now. Any comments or questions on this appointment? Roll call, please.
Mons.
Aye.
Spears.
Aye.
Clocher.
Aye.
Worderk.
Aye.
Walensky.
Aye.
Teeling.
Aye.
Gilson.
Aye.
Sukla.
Aye.
Okay, the next item is a proclamation for National Drunk and Drug Driving 3D Prevention Month, December 20, 2010. Whereas motor vehicle crashes killed 911 people in Illinois during 2009 and whereas 319 of those deaths involved a driver impaired by alcohol and whereas this December holiday season is traditionally one of the most deadly times of the year for impaired driving and whereas for thousands of families across the state and the nation, holidays are a time to remember loved ones lost. And whereas organizations across the state and the nation are joined with the You Drink and Drive, You Lose and other campaigns that foster public awareness of the dangers of impaired driving and anti-impaired driving law enforcement efforts and whereas the community of the United City of Yorkville is proud to partner with the Illinois Department of Transportation's Division of Traffic Safety and other traffic safety groups in that effort to make our roads and streets safer. Now, therefore I, Mayor Valerie Byrd, do hereby proclaim December 2010 as Drunk and Drug Driving Prevention Month in the United City of Yorkville and do hereby call upon all citizens, government agencies, business leaders, hospitals and healthcare providers, schools and public and private institutions to promote awareness of the impaired driving problem, to support programs and policies to reduce the incidence of impaired driving and to promote safer and healthier behaviors regarding the use of alcohol and other drugs this December holiday season and throughout the year. Okay, items number four through 10 are ordinances abating taxes we have to pass every year to keep these from going into the tax rolls. So is that correct? Yes. Making sure. So these are things that we need to do to make sure that taxes don't increase. And I'd like to entertain a motion, unless any of you want to go through these one by one, to approve, to abate these special service areas, item CC 2010-91 through CC 2010-97. So can I entertain a motion to approve these abatements?
So moved.
Second.
Do you have any comments on these abatements?
Worderk.
Aye.
Walensky.
Aye.
Teeling.
Aye.
Gilson.
Aye.
Sukla.
Aye.
Mons.
Aye.
Spears.
Aye.
Clocher.
Aye.
Number 11, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2011 and ending April 30, 2012 and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute. So moved. Second. Okay. Can we have any comments or questions on the taxes? Levy. Roll call, please.
Mons.
Aye.
Spears.
Nate.
Clocher.
Aye.
Worderk.
Nate.
Walensky.
Nate.
Teeling.
Aye.
Gilson.
Nate.
Sukla.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and the next item number 12 was tabled. Item number 13, I asked to have this put on our agenda tonight because there seems to be a lot of confusion about the water bonds and the sewer bonds that are coming due, that these increased payments that we're going to have to pay. And I want to explain what the city has been doing, what the staff has been doing to try to come up with solutions for this. We've, of course, we've seen this coming for a while, but there's only so many things we can do with the water bonds. The staff did try to refinance. The staff did try to refinance, and so I asked to have bond council come in tonight to explain it more clearly so we all understand it. There's, there's so many problems with it that this is not something that we can get rid of by just cutting staff. And right now, just so everybody understands, our city staff is pretty close to being about 30 police officers, full-time, I think that's, that's right around there, right? And we have some part-time officers. And then we have about 52 full-time employees on the other side that's doing parks and recreation, public works. Does that include library? It includes library. And unlike all the other municipalities around us, the city of Yorkville does not have a park district, and it does not have a library district. The city budget has to cover everything. So, we do have a levy that about a third of our levy goes to the library because they are able to levy a certain percentage of their own. But the parks and rec is totally within the city budget, and it's, it's, you know, we decide how much of our budget goes to them. So, with that, I'd like to turn this over to the city administrator, and he's going to explain it with the help of our bond council.
Yeah. My memo, I think, pretty well walks you through the process that led me to three scenarios. And without talking about anything that's above those three scenarios, they are, really, our options are not abating certain property taxes, which is an automatic provision within the bond ordinances of certain bonds, to be put on the special tax rule. Actually, it doesn't even get put on, it reverts to. The ordinance is already in place with the schedule, so it reverts to the tax rule. Creation of what I would term a sewer infrastructure improvement and maintenance fee, similar to what we've done on the water side, and then refinancing to be able to utilize those two, two tools. So, the three scenarios are in your packet. I'm not suggesting that you refinance or restructure any of the bonds simply because of the interest costs that we're already going to be paying over tens or twenties of years, in 10 or 20 years in the future. And really, refinancing a bond that we're maybe four years out of 20 into is just going to add $5 or $6 million in interest cost per restructuring that we do. So, that is shown in option two. You know, basically what you're doing, if you're doing option two, is you're paying a little bit less now and a lot more later and for a lot longer term. So, I think it's pretty clear to see, when you look at the amount of the bonding fee as kind of the, the measure to see what the impact is to the residents, that restructuring and refinancing isn't the option, but nevertheless, we did look at it. And bond council is here. We've got Peter Raphael and Alex Granchelik from William Blair Company, and they can answer questions if you have any on maybe why you can't refinance certain bonds, or why you can't restructure them, or why it's not advantageous. But, you know, the three options are on the table. The one thing with each of the three, in my analysis, I had actually missed one of the sewer bonds, 2004A, which is our common hydraulic bond. So, you add those in, and it actually makes scenario one and two worse. The bonding fee goes up because there's a debt there I didn't account for in my preliminary analysis. But, on the third one, there was a calculation error within one of the cells that actually brings it down, even though I'm adding in that additional bond. So, I've got that here, and I can pass it around if you want to take a look at it. You know, basically, scenario one and two, like I said, the bonding fee goes up. Scenario three, it would go down to the point of, under scenario three, if you were to revert our two Rob Roy sewer bonds to property taxes, you could have a bonding fee in the first year of only $9.27, so that's per month, per user. So, it's a lot better than scenario one or two where we're looking at bonding fees of 30-plus dollars and then increasing for years beyond that. To me, that's not an acceptable option. So, with that being said, like I said, I tried to put everything in the memo that I could think of, and hopefully I made it clear enough. You know, I can entertain any questions anybody has about the memo. Like I said, the bond council is here. And then additionally, too, I have printed off copies of the two Rob Roy bonds that talks about the revert to property taxes, in case if anybody has any questions. If somebody can go make 20 copies of whatever's sitting on the copier, we can hand it back to somebody.
Bart, would you explain a little bit about, with the water bond that you were telling me about, where you dropped the payments till later?
Water bond.
When we were trying to refinance the water bond. I think we postponed some of the payments.
Oh, yes, with Rob Roy, you've actually already done one restructuring. So, we knew about this issue two years ago, and enacted on it with city council approval to restructure your Rob Roy bond, which is 2005D. If anybody's looking at the packet, you've got your scenario three in there, that's probably the easiest one to see. There's a chart at the bottom, it's 2005D Rob Roy and the 2008 Rob Roy restructuring. Basically, we had a seven-year or an eight-year bond that had large principal payments that were supposed to be paid for with infrastructure participation fees to be collected by YBSD when new developments annex into the city and the sanitary district, connection fees, and I think even there were some sewer fees that you pay on your utility bill that we pledged to those. We got to a point a couple of years ago that we looked at our payment and said, "We can't make this this year, but there's some growth in the future that we think is going to come in, so let's just postpone these payments for now until the end of the bond term." So we actually took two payments, the layman's term is called a scoop and drop, and put them on the back end of our bond. So we delayed two payments that should have been made the prior fiscal year and two fiscal years ago, all the way out to fiscal year 16, 17, and 17, 18. Those are two $1-million bond payments, so $2 million total, but it costs us an additional $1 million to do that. So we've already done it once, and that gives you a good idea of the impact of what restructuring does. And it shows you that we've already done it, and we're still staring at the problem, you know, two or three years later.
And as I said before, part of the problem with the water fund was, in addition to these issues with having to pay for the radon, radium, which was mandated but not, we weren't given any funding from the state to do this, so we had to pay for that outright. And then projecting that we thought all this growth was going to come in, so the previous administration moved forward with that, and, and we thought at the time that that was going to pay for itself, and it turned out it didn't, we also ended up stuck with $800,000 of repayment that should have been set aside. I don't know, was that in 2006?
Yes.
Something like that, that we discovered after I became mayor and the city attorney negotiated an agreement with Bank of America, which took over from MPI. And so the city is now required to pay $27,000 a month for three years, I believe?
Yes, the total amount due is over $800,000, it was $825,000. And we negotiated a repayment on a monthly basis without interest. And the original agreement that said the amount due is, if it was not paid, it would be paid with interest. So we had no alternative but to go with that settlement.
And the first we heard about it was, I think, right before the foreclosure, when they suddenly said, "Where's our money?" And it, it should have been set aside as each entity came in and tapped onto the water.
Correct.
A certain percentage was supposed to be set aside for MPI, and it, they failed to do that, and they spent all the money. So, now we have to take it out of the water fund, and that was in part one of the reasons why the water bills went up, which... So now we're looking at issues with the sewer, and it's, the debt is so large that, as I think was said at a previous meeting, we could lay off every person on the administrative side, and we still would not be able to meet the bonds. So it's not a question of us just, you know, being able to avoid this. If we don't do anything, it's going to go onto the taxes, the real estate taxes, because it's guaranteed by the real estate taxes. So, we either refinance, and if it's going to cost the taxpayers millions and millions of extra dollars, or, you know, we let it go onto taxes, and from what I understand, hopefully, because we will have that revenue stream that's assured, then we can refinance and perhaps get a better interest rate and lower the payments.
That's our hope.
So, would you gentlemen like to come up to the podium, and if there are any questions? I thank you for coming out tonight, I appreciate it. They're here to answer any questions you might have about the refinancing, or what the other, you know?
The mic is on. I'm Peter Raphael with William Blair and Company, and I have some familiarity with the Rob Roy deal. And as Bart mentioned, we saw this coming. We tried to take some precautionary measures two years ago. The goal in this deal was that as we expanded to the north, the sewer tap fees and the water tap fees would be used to pay this down. Well, as we all know, development has virtually stopped, and the revenues did not materialize. This was an alternate revenue bond, so the first line of defense was always the revenues from the tap fees that were pledged. To the extent we don't generate those fees, it is set up to go onto the tax bill, and that's where we see ourselves now. In order to refinance this, we would still have to be able to show revenues, and under the statute, it's 125. So for every dollar of debt service, we'd have to show a revenue stream of 125. Right now, all that revenue has been pledged, or is at least being used for all of our other debt obligations. So, you know, we, we don't have a lot of options, and we've looked at a few. To get to a 125 coverage would mean a massive restructuring of all the city's debt, which, as Bart mentioned, adds millions of dollars of interest and stretches the payment out over 20 years. So, I guess the structure that Bart is recommending is, we're going to have to bite the bullet for a few years. If revenues turn around, maybe in three or four years, we can do something, but for the next couple of years, we are really limited in our options.
Do you understand the legal issue about not being able to restructure? We, as a non-homeover municipality, can't issue bonds unless we show that we have an alternate revenue. So we were able to issue these bonds when they were issued because we had alternate revenues, and that revenue stream was there with the new development. And now what we're at is we have these bonds that we would love to refinance, but the quote "alternate revenue" is not there. So you can't refinance an alternate revenue bond without alternate revenue, so that we are legally tied. The only way to do it would be to put it all under GO, and as, as Peter mentioned, when we went through that scenario, it resulted in a minimal additional payment of $12 million. And given the fact that that's maybe the routine that the state of Illinois prefers, it's not the routine of this administration to be as a recommendation. But it's very easy for people to say, "Well, just refinance alternate revenue bonds." They do not understand the legal limitations and the legal ramifications, so that most of these bonds, because they were based on hopes and actual experience of the revenues coming in at the time, were legally issued but cannot been, be legally reissued. Does that help?
The, the one option you have, if you entertain the idea of a bonding fee, would be to roll the first year in over perhaps nine billion periods instead of six. So, we are halfway through a fiscal year, we didn't plan to implement anything, but it is an option you could entertain. What that would do, it would mean that your first-year bonding fee would be a little bit less than what it is now, at no additional cost, you know, in interest. So instead of collecting, oh, let me pull up my number here, instead of collecting $656,000 from 5, 5,900 residents, or 5,900 user accounts over 12 months, you do it over 18. And instead of it being nine and a quarter per month, per user, it's only, let's say, 750, or 775. So, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but, you know, you would decrease it, and that's a form of restructuring that doesn't cost us any additional interest. So, that's one option. Nothing. I, I'm suggesting that if you're looking at scenario three, your fiscal year 11, 12 gap to be covered, 656,646, just that number would be spread over 18 months, because fiscal year 11, 12 doesn't actually start until May. So, if you wanted to start now, we have a bill going out at the end of December that you could begin to collect, and then for the first year and a half, it would actually be less of a burden on the residents per billing cycle, and then, of course, it would be the same in fiscal year 12, 13. So, you know, that's one form of restructuring that doesn't cost any interest because you're not doing any bonds. You're just saying, instead of collecting it from you starting May, we're going to start collecting it now. So, back to the analysis section, you know, I talked about that the fee or the cost being passed on to residents is either regressive or, you know, progressive, and then trying to split it between property taxes and user fees. And there are some advantages to each way. When you look at straight user accounts, you have a lot more residential user accounts than you do have commercial. So any money that you put on a user account via fee is going to be weighted more towards the residents. When you put something on property taxes, there are those same amount of businesses, but their properties are worth more, so they would pay a little bit more on the property tax. So when you split it up between the two, you know, you're taking both sides, and you're saying, "Well, you know, for this methodology, you know, you're getting the benefit of the doubt, and on this other one, you're getting the benefit of the doubt." So, you know, I think that's the best option as far as splitting it, and then, you know, hopefully decreasing the burden a little bit. Property taxes are also income tax deductible if you own the house. So, you know, there are things you can do that, you know, there might be a small shred of a silver lining to this tough situation.
Just on clearance, pardon, I'm reading this correctly. On your scenario number three here, okay, all the debt was due on the top table, but we're taking care of with the bonding fee?
Correct.
And the last column, that's a monthly fee, that would go on the water and sewer bill?
Correct.
And at the bottom, the Rob Roy bonds, that would revert back to property taxes?
Correct.
And these are the numbers and the tax rate? So you're looking at a $250,000 home, in the first year, an extra $241 would be on that tax bill?
Yes.
Whoa. Just for Rob Roy?
Yes. It's just over half of your total tax levy would be due, your total city corporate tax levy, for the debt service for those two bonds.
When you put it in perspective, like we, like I've said many times, if you have a $300,000 house, the city of Yorkville itself, not without the library levy, but just the city gets about $400. So, this would be, like you said, this is 200 and something, just to pay this bond.
Perhaps I misspoke when I compared it to the tax bill. It'd be just over half of your city tax levy, so not your entire tax bill, just your city levy.
City levy, probably 200, because the city levy is about 7% of the total tax bill. So, you know, we've been trying to keep the city levy fairly low and not be a burden on the taxpayers, but this is something, you know, we're stuck with these bonds, we can't pay them. And if anybody can figure out another way, I, we've been looking at this for several years, and we can't see our way out of this mess. Anybody have any other questions? No? Yes, ma'am?
So who was a part of this committee or this meeting that, that put together these numbers and scenarios?
The restructuring?
Yeah, restructuring.
I did the data analysis and kind of redid some of these numbers. Peter and Alex had provided all the refinancing options, the restructure, and they actually had sent over the spreadsheet with different refinancing options. So I tried to tweak it based off of what I thought was the best options.
And can you give an opinion, what you feel is the best scenario, the best restructuring?
If we took scenario three, and again, I understand it's painful, the Rob Roy restructuring, which is the portion that hits the real estate tax, is something that is flexible, and we can review annually. So, for instance, if development did start up on the north, those revenues would come in and be able to decrease the levy or maybe eliminate that levy. In addition, we can look as we go forward, is there a chance to refinance that at a later date? So, if we were to bite the bullet for the first year, we can come back and we can come back and address it again next year to see if there's another solution. For this year, though, it's obvious we don't have the revenue and we don't anticipate the revenue. So, because of the way the indenture is written on this or the bond ordinance, we really don't have a choice. If we don't have the revenue, we have to levy.
And what about the other? Did anyone look at this monthly fee on the water bill? What would happen if that were to go into property taxes as well? Or you just decided to split it up?
We didn't look at the water fee specifically because it's already in place. Yes, it does have to be reauthorized because it sunsets by city council. But we figured it was in place. And given the fact that when we looked at refinancing or restructuring, it became clear that that wasn't the option, in my opinion. I didn't do any further analysis on the water side.
So, when you look at these bonding fees that are gonna be added to the bill? Is that an additional?
Yes.
An additional?
This is the sewer side. The water fee is already set at eight and a quarter.
Right. So, because we just increased it, what, eight and a quarter?
Yes.
To pay for our water side?
Well, this is a sewer bill.
I know, but they get the whole bill together. They'll see the total on their bill. And it's hard to differentiate when you're paying a big bill, what's sewer and what's water. To them, it's a big bill. To me, it's a big bill.
It would be listed separately on a bill. We have that capability now to add an additional line item, which was, I think, one of the complaints a couple billing cycles ago, was that everything was lumped together. But we do have the ability to break it out now.
But it's not an option to put that into property taxes? Because it's?
The water?
The sewer. The sewer. Whole thing.
This is all sewer?
Right.
All of this is sewer?
Now, instead of having this bonding fee, can you put everything on?
Oh.
Or is that?
You might be, yeah, you might be able to.
As a homeowner, it's less painful to me. And I get to tax, I get to deduct it from my taxes. I mean, it's painful regardless, but that monthly fee is pretty hefty.
Yeah. Just looking at Scenario Three, and I haven't studied the bond ordinances at all, but 2005 C, 2004 B, and 2003 A, my guess is those are all probably able to revert to property taxes.
Thank you.
Bart, anything that was originally an alternate revenue bond? We potentially could do that. Anything that was a debt certificate or otherwise? We don't have the legal authority to issue general obligation bonds or put that on the levy.
Do you know off the top of your head which ones of those are debt certificates?
I don't. We have here, though, that, on the sheets that we gave you, Bart, that the council does not have, I would say about 50% of the outstanding debt obligations are alternative revenue bonds. So, there could be some engineering done where we could push more onto the tax bill. It's a matter of what the city council wants.
We're gonna pay it regardless, in my opinion.
You're gonna pay it one way or the other?
I'm gonna pay it regardless. To me, I, you know, personally, I'd rather, you know, pay it in my mortgage and at least get a write-off from it. It could be, it's a little, so looking at it every month, they only have to look at it twice a year. I don't know. I just wondered if you looked into it, if?
We can study that and bring it back.
If the council wants to know, if they feel like it's worth it.
Are you just looking for an individual consensus from every one of us as to what's proposed here right now?
Well, what I was looking for, number one, was to inform everybody of the facts so that everybody would get a feeling for what we're fighting here. And number two, if you want to weigh in, I think that would be great because it will give staff direction. So, yes, if you would like to give your opinion, you could start.
Well, if we're gonna go across the board and do an individual consensus, I, sure, I have some comments. But I, you know, obviously, we're not gonna be doing that as a whole. And we're just looking at going further and looking at possibly adding it to the property taxes. Then there's no sense in discussing that.
Okay, well, do you, you wanna say one, two, or three? Alderman Galinski?
Actually, I still had a question.
Go ahead.
Has there been any discussion with YBSD to see if there's any way they can help us out? I know they're sitting on a big fund balance reserve and all these assets, especially the Rob Roy. I mean, these are assets that are gonna be turned over to YBSD when they're paid for.
Yeah, I had a phone conversation with their finance director, as you may know, was our former finance director. And so, she is familiar with our debts and, you know, their financial situation. And she did not feel that there was any part of YBSD's budget that was either needed to be forwarded over to the city or could sustain this debt. So, she didn't put that in writing, but that's what she had expressed to me.
Anyone else have any questions? So, can we, oh, I'm sorry.
Are you gonna poll?
Yeah, I was going to start polling. So, Alderman Galinski, would you like to?
You can start on the other side.
Okay.
Kitty corner. Well, I don't like the idea of refinancing. I think that's a bad idea. I mean, it's $4 million for one of the bonds and $6 million for another bond. Plus, we still have a huge bonding fee that we have to pay. None of these are very good scenarios, but we do, we had to pay the bills. And in the perfect world, we'd have the money to pay this if things were still going the way that they expected them to go when they made these agreements. But we all know that that's not gonna happen. So, I would have to say, of all these terrible scenarios and all these different ways we could do this, I think the third one would be the only option that I could go with.
I guess what I'm gonna say is not to be contentious or debating. It's just to say it, to look at this thing with a critical eye. You know, it's been said that we can cut all staff and still not meet our obligations. And I guess I still feel that more cuts need to be made in both personnel and spending. As I mentioned in committee, and I'll mention here again, before we make any final decisions and seriously discuss any sewer fund obligations and potential for adding another sewer fee, and specifically to what amount, I guess I'd like to see the numbers finalized and in front of me, including cut proposals. You know, as I said, that being said, I guess I wanna point out some of the issues that's brought us to this extreme and the answers to my questions at the committee level so that people out there understand what we're looking at. Number one, in terms of the sewer fund at the city, and this is before my involvement, decided to front fund and take on the responsibility of debt to an estimate, and this number I got from you, Bart, in committee level, to the estimate $25 million in the name of growth. And, you know, I was told this would have normally been funded by the Yorkville Bristol Sanitary District. Our sewer fund is supposed to be self-sustaining, yet it's not. And we talk about it being improper budgetary procedures to try to take excess from other funds and funnel it in to pay that down because it's an enterprise fund. But an enterprise fund should have been self-sustaining in the first place. So, we certainly are on a catch-22. You know, we're currently paying back the Grand Reserve developer for water connection fees that we agreed to rebate once collected. And we never rebated them when we collected them. I mean, that's, I mean, this is what we're, this is why we're here. You know, third, we have an estimated $1.3 million. And I'm using that rough, that amount in rough terms, of bad debt due to non-collection of developer fees and deposits per our city policy. You know, once again, now we want the residents to pay for all the above-mentioned issues. And I feel we need to get creative, look outside the box in some manner or another, without raising these fees again. And like I said, if that's improper budgetary procedures, by looking outside the box and carefully planning the funnel of excess funds from other accounts into that to pay that down, you know, let's look at bringing in good commercial retail development, you know, cut spending, cut personnel, do whatever we can in our power to avoid passing this burden along to the residents in a time of recession. And I understand the argument, but I, I just, you know, I didn't get us to this point, nor did the residents. And yet, we're here. And, you know, I can in good conscience vote for a sewer fee increase in addition to the water infrastructure fee that we just added to the bills. And that's where I'm at on this. Thank you.
Me?
Well, I didn't hear an answer in there, really, a resolution. I think we need to look at a resolution. The city can't not pay their bills. We have to pay our bills. We have to be responsible. And I think that most of the people that are on city council now are not in office at the time when all these obligations were made, during the time of good growth and good economic times. They couldn't have foreseen this. And, you know, even though I think Alderman Woodrick's been out there trying to sell the sewer lines that are underneath our ground, he hasn't got any takers yet. So, they're ours, and we need to pay for them, even though they're going nowhere to no homes. We put them in the ground, and, you know, we have to pay for them. These are all bad scenarios. As far as the refinancing options that are here, I'll use my own example. The way I think of it is, six years ago, I got a 10-year mortgage, and I have four years left on it. And it's really, really hard for me to make that payment. But I could easily get a 30-year mortgage right now, and I could easily make the payments. But my, in the long run, I'd pay a lot more money. In the long run, I'd probably pay $100,000 in interest. When I could just, when I can just, like, cut and cut and figure out a way to pay this for four more years, I'll be done. So, to me, this is, that's kinda how I compared it with this refinancing, on a much smaller level, of course. But, yeah, I think the city, and it has cut and cut. They've cut their employees over 20%. They've cut, so far, services haven't been seen, I don't think, by residents. But there's a lot that's been cut. And I think that they're in the process of probably cutting more. But there's no, there's no fat in this budget at any department level. There just isn't. I've seen what they've been doing for the last four years, three and a half years. And they're doing without, all over. So, it's a bad, it's a bad situation. And I'll tell you, it's really hard. I've said it before, it's really hard to raise your own bills. And I have to pay these bills too, and things are hard all over. But I would say that of the three terrible options that we've been given, I don't see, I think it would be irresponsible to pick one or two. And we'd have to do Scenario Three. But as I said before, I would like to look into just what could be put into property taxes so we could at least get that tax. Homeowners could get some kind of tax relief from that during income tax time.
Alderman, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going for Option Four right now. You know, again, since you just dropped this on us today, you know, again, we need a little more information. And I really have a hard time finding out how some of these agencies, like the Yorkville Bristol Sanitary, sitting on loads of cash. And we're sitting there struggling when we paid, obviously, our money went into that place to give them the surplus. So, something's going on there that Rob needs to talk to Susan about and see what's going on. Because again, I just can't see how they're sitting on cash, all fat, dumb, and happy. And we're sitting there scrounging every day, sewer once more, water once more. And most people I talk to where I live can't afford anymore. Our water bill went up $160,000, now it was $205,000 for this current bill. That was gonna go up to $250,000 pretty soon. Your water bill and sewer bill's gonna be more than any other service you have. And I don't think that's right. And basically, at this point, I'm not really, you know, ready to choose any of these right now. So, I'm sticking with Four right now.
Just to answer your question, though, from what I understand, the reason Mr. Pfister and his, well, formerly Mr. Pfister's group, they did not want to expand the water and sewer lines for the new growth to the extent that the city did. So, the city decided to take on that obligation. We took it on ourselves, from, this is the way I understand it. And because we now have people, these lines do go up to houses. Bristol Bay is one of them that is serviced, I believe, by, isn't that correct, by Rob Roy? So, they do go somewhere, and they do service people. There is people at the end of the lines. But there are not as many people, like, say, in Grand Reserve, anywhere near what we thought that was coming in there. We were told, what, 2,700 people would be served by this? And I think there's a couple hundred out there. So, there's a huge discrepancy. And that explains, you know, that was a decision that the former city council made to do that. So, I just wanna clarify that, that they made a decision not to go ahead with that kind of expansion. And the city wanted to do it. So, the city took on that debt obligation. Alderman Spears?
I'm gonna wait until we get all the information.
Okay, and all the information you're talking about is, do you want to see if some of, some more of this debt can be put into?
Property taxes.
Property taxes. That's the only other piece of information we're missing. Is that correct? We all are aware of that? Oh, could you wait till it gets you? Alderman Floater?
I'm not in favor of refinancing. I know that for a fact. I might could add millions and millions of dollars just to spread this out. I'd like to see the numbers put in the taxes and say it before I make a decision like that, just someone to mull over for a while. I'm with Marty on this one. I think we all need to look outside the box. I'm open to anybody's suggestions, residents too. And it doesn't mean I'm gonna agree with them. But we need to think hard on this. There's gotta be a way to do something.
Yes, sir.
This is a debt that we need to pay. Unfortunately, there's no way we're gonna get out of it. And with that being said, looking at the scenarios that have been presented, I have to echo all of Alderman Setcliff's sentiments on this. And I would choose out of the three bitter pills, Scenario Three.
Some of the other information I'd like to see is some additional spending cuts proposed. Already, since I've been on this council, garbage fees have went up. We've instituted entertainment tax, a water rate increase, water infrastructure fee. And the tax level that just passed, the rate is going up about 12 and a half percent. So, for me, this conversation would be a lot easier if I knew that the city was making a commitment to aggressive spending cuts. I don't think that has happened yet. We have to institute more spending cuts, think outside the box, like I've heard several times. There's been some proposals during budget talks. And granted, that's not gonna solve all of our problems and only be miniscule part of our problem. But it makes this conversation a whole lot easier. I just like the Speaker of the House saying he's not gonna take private airlines. He's taking passenger airline. And that's the stuff we have to take. And it makes it a lot easier for our residents if we make those cuts. It makes this a lot easier to handle, a lot easier to discuss. So, I guess that's Option Four.
The only comments I would have to make on that is the city will be making those further cuts. But those are all more related to the general fund. They do not affect the sewer fund at all. We need to have staff to handle the sewer lines, to continue doing these repairs. If somebody's got a break in their yard, they're going to want somebody to show up to fix it. We have, this is one of those funds where the people who are employed to handle this, we need to have them. We don't have, how many are employed to do this? Off the top of your head, do you know? Three?
Just so.
Yeah. We have three people who work and are paid out of the sewer fund. Like I said, we have 52 full-time employees. And we will be reviewing the budget again. And we will be presenting things to you at the next city council meeting. But this does not affect this problem. So, the city staff is constantly going through the budget and trying to come up with other places to cut. But all of these things, for instance, like the Holiday Under the Stars people, we had somebody call in, and they thought, you know, well, why do we have this Christmas tree? We're wasting money on decorations. All of this was donated. It's all donated. We're not taking any money out of the city taxes. Businesses are donating, residents are donating, organizations, just so that our residents can have a nice Christmas program. But none of this, the old jail, people keep saying that. But none of this, the old jail, people keep saying that, tax revenues, the local tax revenue, that one even is a flow through your tax dollars that you gave to the state, came back to our community, and are now being held by the county board. So it came back to you, and it's in the hands of the county board. And it's not something out of our tax revenues, and we actually raised enough funds through the haunted house to pay for any insurance costs or any incidentals for lawyers, that fees that we had to use to close on that, lawyers. But all of these, we're trying to be very fiscally responsible and not, you know, we cut, we didn't go to the municipal meeting this year. The members of the City Council, usually that's something that we like to do. Twelve years I was on the City Council, this is the first year we haven't done that. So I know the staff is being very careful. I know the police department is being very careful. We are, the chief tells me bare bones were down in all of these areas. But this is something that, it's very unfortunate, because I remember when I was on the City Council, I know Alderman Spears, we often asked questions. She especially was very, you know, going through the budget all the time. And I have to be honest, sometimes we just didn't get the information. I have memos from that time that, you know, we asked questions, and we weren't provided with the answers. So I think if we could go back, you know, hindsight is 2020, like they say, but I'm not even sure that we could have affected the vote, because we were minority members. So these are things we brought up over the years, and our concerns about things and how things were being handled. And, you know, I think unfortunately, it proved to be too true. So I wish, like Alderman Gilson said, that some of the things could have been done differently. But we can't fix it now, we can only go forward. So I don't think any one of us wants to do anything to raise anybody's taxes. We are all aware. I know that you've read some of the information in the paper about this alternate energy proposal that's coming towards us. These are outside-the-box kinds of ideas, like you're talking about. We're constantly looking, I'm constantly looking, for new revenue sources to alleviate these taxes and these burdens on our taxpayers. But, you know, we're constantly trying to encourage new people to come to the community, and that's what that Whitewater Park was all about. In the downtown, we've already had quite a few people come in last weekend. And what I tried to explain to some people who don't understand why I'm so excited about this is when we have new people coming in, they go to our local businesses and eat, that increases our sales tax revenues. And then maybe new businesses will come in that want to service, if they see a lot of people there on the weekends, okay, maybe I can have a little store in the downtown now, because there are customers here that weren't here before. So it's all tied together. But I think, I mean, Alderman Woodrick was out there, and he's very excited about it, too. So, yes, these are the kinds of things we have to do, and we have to keep bringing new people in here and bring in the customers, so that these businesses can actually stay in business. And I think we all realize that. So I think, like a lot of you said, you weren't even on the City Council when these decisions were made. And even those of us who were on the City Council, if we tried to bring up questions about them, we were ignored. And I think that, you know, these are really unfortunate times, and like all the other Aldermen, I don't want to pay these bills either. My budget's really, really tight, and, you know, this is the last thing we want to do, especially at Christmas time. So, but I think let's, then, if anybody else has any questions? Yes, ma'am.
What's the timeline that we're looking at, do we require to start making payments at some point?
Almost all of your debt service payments are going to be due in December. For this year, we're okay.
Okay.
So we wouldn't have time to refinance and be able to make those payments, anyway. So we are looking at December 2011 for most of these payments. So I think it's three to four months of lead-in time if we wanted to do a restructuring or a refinancing. So we are, you know, in front of it. We are, we are, even if we were to implement a sewer fee, you know, we don't have to do that until June 30th to have it, have an impact through the entire next fiscal year. So we do have some time on this.
So if we got, I have one last question. If we got a really big project, say that Ochoa thing had come through, and we had this really big project next year, could we vote next year to abate the tax?
Yes.
Or we could then stop it?
Typically, abatement ordinances are due in January, February, or March. So if it were to come along in September in an annex, we'd be looking at the next fiscal year beyond that.
Right. But the next year, we could abate it?
Yep.
So just because we wouldn't abate it one year, that doesn't mean we couldn't abate it the next year?
Correct.
Okay. So this wouldn't have to go on indefinitely, once we don't abate it?
Right. And that's, on the Rob Roy bonds, which is where the real estate tax impact was, again, it's a year-by-year analysis.
Yes, sir.
So, Peter, I get, maybe this is a question for you. On the abatement process, so we don't want to abate these Rob Roy's. How does it work? I mean, who does the calculations? How are the tax rates figured? How is it implemented on the property tax bill? Because I'm not familiar with that process at all.
I can, I can answer most of that, I think. Within the bond ordinance, there's a debt service schedule, which is what we make the payments on each year if we have the alternate revenues. So when we approve that at City Council, which we did in 2005, we file that with the county clerk. And the county clerk puts that in the file and says, okay, this is going to go on the tax bill each year unless we get an abatement ordinance from the city. And so when they don't get an abatement ordinance, they pull that from the file, and they say, okay, here's the number, and it's in there. And then, remember, you levy for a dollar amount. You never levy for a tax rate specifically. So they apply that dollar amount to all the taxable property in the city, and then that's how you get the tax rate.
Does that show up on the tax bill as a separate line, or is that?
That's a good question, one I don't know.
Does it just roll right into the City of Yorkville?
It would be rolled into the City of Yorkville line item.
Okay.
Are you sure? Because every county's different. We would have to check.
Well, you would, if you looked at one of your tax bills now, for the people that live here, I don't think each debt obligation is listed separately. I believe it's all rolled up into the city.
A library construction bond, which was a non-capped property tax from a general obligation bond approved by referendum, is actually within the library tax levy line item within your tax bill. So there's the City of Yorkville, which is, you know, let's say it's $400, and then there's the library one, it's 200. That actually includes their operations and their building, building cost. So it may be.
And to add to your question about the abatement, if for any chance a portion of the debt service is available to us, we could reduce that amount, so that even though our debt service is 256,000, or whatever it is next year, 600, and we receive 200,000 in revenues, we would at least abate the 200, so that what would go on the tax bill. So that's why the most accurate thing, the most accurate thing to do is to have an annual analysis of what's there, what we owe, what we can do, and how to cover it.
Bart, isn't the Rob Roy sewer, though, the one that services Kendall Marketplace?
It goes past Kendall Marketplace.
But they don't use it?
I don't think so.
Which one do they use?
Maybe one of the lower branches. But the branches that were authorized under 2005, I believe bypassed it. Yes, no? Someone goes to?
They, they do serve by law.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
So if we got another store, that would be of assistance and allow us at least to, to lower the cut, the hit?
Most of the property that we had thought would pay for that bond was located in the area generally bounded by Eldomaine Road to the west, Baseline Road to the north, our eastern property line, and then somewhere near Cornelius Road. So it's the Westbury Village property, east, west, north, and south of all of those. And the West Haven property, which was formerly Dell Webb, Bristol Bay, so.
But I guess the point I was going to make, too, though, was with the Kendall Marketplace, if it wasn't for Kendall Marketplace taking up the slack in our sales tax revenues that when Effie Wheaton went way down, we would have been in really, really bad shape, because they took up, they kept us at a, even when everybody else was showing a huge decrease in their sales tax revenues.
Yes.
Isn't that correct? So. Well, does anybody else have any other comments or questions? Well, thank you very much, Peter, for coming in. I appreciate it. So we just have to get a few more stores in Kendall Marketplace. Next item, City Council report. There is no report on here. City Attorney's report?
No report.
City Clerk's report?
No report.
City Treasurer?
Mayor's report.
City Administrator?
I do have one report, Your Honor. We did open RFP proposals, or RFPs middles, rather, for our riverfront building, which is located at 301 East Hydralic. We had two vendors submit proposals today. One was Geneva Kayak Center, which I believe has just recently vacated their spot in Geneva, and the Yak Shack, which I believe is actually another word for kayak rather than an actual yak. So good to know. We have two kayak vendors that are interested. Minimal deviations from the RFP that we had proposed. One of them, I think, wanted to cap the amount of concessions per month at $1,200 that they were going to give the city. And the other one, I think, had offered $250 a month in rent instead of $200, and then was offering to give the city 20% of instruction fees and classes that were taken out of it. So both solid vendors, like solid proposals. So those will be discussed at Park Board on December 16th, and then from there, probably at a committee at the City Council, and the City Council after that.
Yeah, I just want to ask if we got, those are the only vendors that responded, those two?
Those are the only two. We did submit it far and wide. We actually submitted it to the Illinois Paddling Council, and it got into their newsletter and to some of their selected vendors. But only two had actually responded.
Didn't we open it up to more than just kayak vendors?
We did.
We opened it up to any kind of vendors, I mean, any kind of business at all?
Yep.
And Neil, and once we got our two kayak?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything else under Parks and?
That's all.
I take it that's your Parks and Rec account?
That's all of my hats, yes.
Okay. Finance Director's report?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Spears.
Could you repeat that monthly fee again? The second vendor?
Yeah. The second vendor proposed $250 in monthly rent as opposed to 200, which was the floor that was set within the RFP. So we said you had to have a minute, you had to pay us a minimum of $200 per month for that space, and they had proposed 250 instead of 200.
What did the other vendor?
200.
Okay. Thank you. Good question. Okay. Finance Director?
Just a report. The audit is progressing, and field work is scheduled to begin on December 6th. Thank you.
City Engineer?
I just want to add, Fountain View developer has obtained their Ida Highway grant. Fountain View is on the west, east side of Rock 47, just north of the highway department. So they're continuing utilities across the highway over the past week. One thing that you'll start seeing next week is roadway work. They will also be removing the existing traffic signal and putting up a temporary stand wire signal. They need to do this because they need to modify the permanent signal. And then after a while, we'll be seeing a new permanent signal put back in there. Sorry.
Director of Public Works?
Just one thing. Just want to let everybody know that we are done with the leaf collection for the year. I know that everybody sees a few piles left around town, and residents have been calling and asking about that. We've been telling them that they do need to bag those, and they still have the rest of this week and next week on their normal garbage pickup for those unlimited yard-based bags.
Chief of Police?
No report.
Oh, I would just like to commend the police department and everybody else. I know Glory was involved, too, who worked on traffic control for the Holiday Under the Stars. You guys did a great job. I think it was, to me, the way I saw it was, looked like regular Friday night traffic. So somehow you were able to really mitigate that, and I think you did a great job.
Thank you. It was a lot of public work, so.
Thank you.
I doubt.
I'm sorry I left you out, too, but.
That's all right.
Thank you very much. I think, you know, everybody and the staff of Parks, whoever was there, I think all the staff members who volunteered really appreciate it, and I think the residents did. They all seemed to be having a great time, and I think it was a great event. So Glory did an outstanding job. Once again, every year gets bigger and better. So thank you, Glory. Community Development Director?
Just one item, and just wanted to announce the Kendall County Planning Consortium, they will be having their meeting November 30th at 7:00 p.m. It will be held at the historic courthouse, and the topic will be Kendall County Transportation Plan and Land Resource Management.
Relations Officer, Glory, tell us how great it was.
Well, actually, I just really want to thank the police department, the Public Works, the Parks and Rec Department, and everybody that helped, and all the community organizations and groups, because really, most of everything was donated. I think we're going to be in the black again, about $3,000. So we did pretty well. I couldn't have done it without all the community groups. Everybody seems to want to help out during the event. We had a great turnout over at Parkview Christian Academy, who, you know, was full most of the night. And we had, you know, the Kendall County Forest Preserve, we had the Girl Scouts, we had the Junior Women's Club. All the groups were, donated their time and actually money to some of those things. So I really couldn't have done it and, you know, put money in the kitty for next year without their help. The other thing I do want to announce is that we're also, I'm also working on a volunteer income tax assistance program with the Kendall County Food Pantry, and we're looking for volunteers to provide income tax help for low-income families through January, February, March, and April. And we're having orientation session on Thursday, December 2nd, at 6:00 p.m. here at City Hall. I have gotten quite a few calls, so we're working with the IRS to provide that service here in Yorkville.
Next is community and liaison reports. Does anybody have a community liaison report? The only report I would have to make is that I attended the KenCom meeting, and the City of Yorkville joined with Swigal and Plano in vetoing the new intergovernmental agreement that was presented at that meeting, and our veto was overridden by a vote of eight to three. So that was the end of that discussion for now. So just wanted you all to know, we're continuing to review things about that. Committee reports. Public Works Committee report. We have three items.
First will take PW 2010-69, a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement for the replacement of the River Road Bridge over Blackberry Creek, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute subject to legal and staff review.
Any comments or questions?
We're on 2010-69, correct?
Yes.
Just a clarity question, and I kind of heard two different answers, Bart, so if you can clear this up for me, for my sake. Are we, if this goes forward and this agreement signed, is, are we going to be able to pay for this bridge replacement out of, all completely out of MFT funds? Or is this going to hit our general fund?
It would be all out of MFT funds.
I'm okay with it, then. I just want to know that that's the fact. Thank you.
Do we have that amount in there now, in the MFT fund?
It's not in this year's budget or next year's budget that we had previously talked about. We are getting additional disbursements of MFT from the state, five disbursements of about $70,000. So that's almost our entire year's budget in additional money spread out over the next two fiscal years. And so the way this project is going to work is there's going to be a fair amount of engineering involved. So those costs are going to come in the next two or three fiscal years, and then the construction costs will come in the third and fourth fiscal year. So we're looking at 2014, 2015. And doing some estimates...
And doing some estimates of spreading that cost over the actual implementation of the project, you'd be able to fund it out of MFT.
So by 2012, we have to come up with, wasn't that the, in the agreement? City reimburses the county for said 20% on a before April 30th, 2012?
Correct.
And we're counting on funds coming in from the state to cover that, correct?
Correct. And we had estimated $40,000 due next fiscal year, $20,000 the following fiscal year, $100,000 the fiscal year after that, and then $500,000 that last fiscal year. So that puts us out all the way into 2014, 2015.
But we use MFT for other projects that are qualified only for MFT. Do we have any things that we're anticipating?
Sure. Game Farm Road is one of them. The other one is Route 47, a portion of that will go into MFT.
My opinion is we're committing funds, again, that we really don't know whether we have or not, and I just don't want it to end up like these bonds, or when we go out for grants, we have no matching funds. And to me, this is similar.
I make absolutely no warrant to being able to pay for Game Farm Road out of MFT solely. You'll be able to fund a portion of Game Farm Road with MFT because that is going to be rolled out over a few fiscal years as well. But there will be a point with that project where you'll probably have to go out and try to figure out how to pay for that, or not do it.
Now, Route 47, do we pay for, out of MFT, do we pay any portion?
Portion of it, yes.
Okay.
So streets and sidewalks, streetlights, traffic signals, if there are any, those type of things. But all of our sewer and water projects will be paid for out of the Sewer and Water Fund.
I just like to point out one difference with this one is that this is a safety issue. This bridge is failing, so you can't let people be driving over a bridge and have it collapse because you'll be paying a lot more. This is definitely a safety issue. You know, what happens as far as these other projects, you know, there's potholes that we can fill, but this one, I think, is, we really have to be careful with. So this is what we've been told by the county.
Yes, ma'am.
But don't they use county taxes that we're all paying? I mean, this is the same argument that we hear in other areas, but the county is taxing us, and now the residents in Yorkville also are going to have to kick in a percent. So how can we say that that's different?
It's a city bridge.
Yes.
It's a city bridge. It's not a county bridge. This is our bridge. So they're actually helping us pay this. See, the way I understand it, is that not correct? It's our obligation because it's our bridge.
I just want to say that it looks like, from this memo that nobody else probably has, that Phase 1 and Phase 2 of engineering, 80% of that's being covered by the Federal Highway Bridge Program. So we're paying 20% of engineering, 1 and 2, and then Phase 3 costs, which is the construction, I guess, 80% of that is being paid for by I-DOT funding. So once again, we're only having to pay for 20% of the cost of this project overall. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to point out, too, that we already have a weight restriction on this bridge, and we do not yet have to close this, but it could be a very real possibility in the near future if we do not fix it quickly. We have exposed rebar on this bridge, as crumbling as we speak. We're lucky that no significant damage in the buy annual thing was reported, but it's a ticking time bomb waiting to happen. Hopefully, no one's on the bridge when we have to close it, and if we do have to close it.
If there's heavy flooding, who knows what would happen?
Correct.
So it's definitely a high priority.
Do we have any other questions? We'll call, please. Collier?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Blonsky?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Scott Clark?
Aye.
Mons?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
So next item's actually broken into three parts, so I'll do them individually. That's PW 2010-75. First one is Part A, motion to approve an ordinance regarding.
Aldman Collier, excuse me, one minute.
May I address the city council, Aldman Collier, especially as Chair of the Public Works? Upon receipt of these proposed documents, I would ask that the city council consider tabling them, because I need to do further research. I think we took some action in this area when I first came on board as city attorney, and I need the time to go back and research it because I think some of these issues have already been addressed. And so I would beg the consideration of the city council to table this to allow me to reconsider or research it before.
To December 14th? Is that okay?
December 14th would be fine.
So could we?
Make a motion to table this to December 14th, second.
We'll call. Aldman Wedrick?
Blonsky?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Scott Clark?
Aye.
Mons?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number three.
Moving right along. This is PW-2010-80, it was originally consent, a dial number seven. Like to make a motion, pass the one-year warranty period expired December 22nd, 2010. The warranty punch list has been complete. Recommend release warranty and the bond.
Do we have a second? Second.
Second.
Aldman Tealyn, second one. Okay, you have questions?
Yeah, I actually pulled this off to be discussed in committee level, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we all agree by majority that we were going to wait till December 22nd, when the official warranty time period expired, before we went further and passed this. I know that was the majority in committee level, and I'm not sure why it's here.
Is that correct?
Yeah, but I believe that's what we're doing.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah. It stated that we're waiting.
Are we waiting till, this is one year where it expires on December 22nd, the warranty punch list has been completed. It says recommend the release of the warranty bond. Is that releasing that now?
On December 22nd.
Okay, so we are going to release it on December 22nd?
That's what this says.
Okay, okay. And I apologize.
Any other questions? We'll call. Tealyn?
Aye.
Gilson?
Aye.
Scott Clark?
Aye.
Mons?
Aye.
Spears?
Aye.
Collier?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Blonsky?
Aye. Motion carries. We don't have an economic development committee report, a public safety committee report, or administration committee report, so we're still in additional business. Yes, sir.
I have two items. First, I would like to ask if maybe we could get a joint meeting between us and the YBDS Board. George, could you ask them that?
I'm sorry?
Joint city council meeting maybe between us and YBDS?
YBSD?
Yes, that would be the right one.
You want me to ask that?
No, the staff will.
Oh, I can ask that in committee level, if you, I mean, at the liaison, the next meeting, if that's what you're asking.
If that would be appropriate, or the staff.
Or you want staff to do it. I'm happy to do it, or you can do it as well, Bart.
I think the administrator could do it quicker. We can call tomorrow.
That's fine. And the other, other thing is, is I've been noticing that Old Second isn't doing so well. I know we have some funds in there. I was wondering if we're covered and everything on that? I'm sure that you've looked into it, but.
We have. We are collateralized with them, which means we are secure with our resources.
Any other liaison reports? There's some business. Right, when they were talking about Fountainview putting in a temporary light in, it reminded me of Sycamore Street Light on 34 in Sycamore, and I just wondered what the status is of that, because I thought we only had 18 to 24 months to put in a permanent light.
I believe we got an extension through 2012. Joe?
We did get an extension. We want to position that the city could, so, 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 basically, we're, we're recommending to repeat that signal service for the time being.
That's good.
It is a budgeted item, has been approved by city council for fiscal year 12, 13, out of the MFT line item. Show it.
Okay. The other thing is, I would, somebody I know wanted to move to Yorkville and found several houses that they really liked, but they weren't able to purchase them because of the HOA's being in arrears.
Yep.
So is there anything we can do? Because I'd love people to come buy a house in Yorkville.
We have talked, I think it was actually at a mayor's meeting at Bristol Bay, about things that the HOA management company can do. Most of it's between the residents and the management company and the residents. So, you know, we've, when people call us and ask that and say, you know, isn't this awful, and can you do anything? We say, you know, if you want us to call the people who owe money and, you know, ask them to fulfill their moral obligation or their financial obligation to pay those fees, you know, we might do that, because it is preventing people from moving into the city. But there's no ordinance we can pass, or there's no, you know, official action we can take.
Well, I wondered in the case of some of these subdivisions that are bank-owned, if it would be worth their while to, to bring these, these costs, these bills up to date in order to be able to sell some properties? Have they, anyone asked them about that?
I have talked to two different HOA management companies, one of which is part of a, you know, or was foreclosed upon. This is the new management company, and one that's for an existing builder, and both of them have declined to do that at this point. They are funding the HOA budgets, both of them, actually, to a large extent to keep open pools and clubhouse operations, but, you know, actually, funding HOA dues and arrears wasn't something they made the step to yet.
There's a lot, a lot of instances, there's no one to call because people have lost their homes and they don't live there anymore, so they're, we wouldn't, I, I just wondered if we could work with the banks on that. That's unfortunate, because the only way to buy a house in these subdivisions is if you have cash, because a mortgage won't give you a loan if you're over 15% in arrears on your HOA.